All right, I'm going to go ahead and get started. It looks like we have everyone out of the waiting room. But just to orient us, it is November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the afternoon of our third day of hearing on the pending petition for change by the City of Solving Water Right Permit one five eight seven eight. And where we broke before lunch, we had heard from Mr. Sen, his summary of his written testimony. And we, I believe, are ready for cross-examination of Mr. Sen. But before we get started with that, is there anything that I'm missing about our status? All right, with that, I will look to you, Ms. O'Sullivan. Are you going to be handling the cross-examination for the city? You are on mute.
Thank you. Yes, I am.
Great. And Mr. Sen, are you ready to get started?
Yes, Miss Kenzie, I am.
Great, thank you. Then I hand things over to you, Ms. O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie, and I can now say good afternoon, Mr. Sen.
Good afternoon, Ms. O'Sullivan.
Thank you, and I thank you for answering some questions from me today. So in your written testimony, you referred to a photo of an area between well site A and B. Do you recall that?
Yes, I am. I do.
Okay, and you say that CDFW staff took those photos, not you, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I just want to confirm that CDFW staff who are not identified only visited that area between well site A and well site B once, correct?
I do not know. Can I mention the person that did that if that's okay? And maybe that person can speak more to that or if not, and I do not know if that the staff there have visited there one or ones.
I think that's sufficient for my purposes. Your testimony says only refers to the date of May eighteenth, correct?
That's what was the date of the photos, yes.
Okay, thank you. And your testimony does not explain when that's those CDFW staff members or member arrived at that site or left from the site.
As far as the time of day, I do not know, but those were daytime photos, so sometime during the day, I do not know when they arrived or left during that day.
Okay, thank you. And your testimony doesn't include any description or and and there's no exhibit with any notes of what CDFW staff did during that visit on May eighteenth, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And your direct testimony also does not say or describe that CDFW staff or yourself visited or surveyed any habitat areas downstream of the project site during your preparation for this hearing, correct?
No, I did not survey the site myself, but when you say survey the site, what do you mean?
I I'm specifically referring to area habitat areas downstream of the project site, that those were not visited or surveyed.
I cannot speak of other staff, but I can speak only to myself. I would have to confer with other staff to to give you a full answer to that.
Okay, with respect to yourself, did you? No, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And your testimony does not indicate or say that you or any other CDFW staff did protocol level surveys at the project site, correct?
Correct. Again, can urinary protocol level surveys for what species?
Any species. You did not. Your testimony does not discuss doing protocol level surveys for any species.
Correct for for the wildlife species. Correct. As far as fish species, I do not know. I'd have to confer with my colleagues.
Thank you. You mentioned critical habitat for the, is it swiffle? Is that how you pronounce?
The four-letter acronym for bird species, alphabetically, the four acronym, the southwestern will of like.
Yes, the the flycatcher, but there's no designated critical habitat actually in well site B, correct?
No, not at well site B. It occurs approximately two thousand feet.
Downstream. Okay, thank you. Ms. Mullen, if we could pull up CDFW sixty-four, please? And I realized I was remiss in giving you my list of exhibits to get ready this time, but there's not not as many here, so. Thank you, Ms. Mullen. I know things are a little small, Mr. Sen, but I believe you're familiar with this map. I referred to it in your testimony and your and your summary. So this is a figure that you derived from the two thousand and eleven Kachuma reservoir final EIR that CDFW annotated. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and again, it's quite small, but it shows areas that are labeled as suitable habitat that start near well, what's what you've all labeled as well site B, correct?
Correct.
And there's areas that are labeled that are green, correct, on the map? And those are labeled occupied areas?
Yes, and after zooming, I think in nineteen, between, sorry, eighty-nine and ninety-nine is what the legend says.
Yes, and the green occupied areas are near Buell, start near Buellton, correct?
Yes, and east of the one oh one, east a little bit of that right dot, that's west of site B, there's a little bit green to the right of that as well.
Okay, I see the green starting at Buellton.
Now, if you zoom in, you can see that it occurs also to the little bit to the right of that right red dot.
Let's, Ms. Mullen, if we can, please zoom in.
And you're speaking to the red dot that's closest to site B there, just to the, okay, and you're saying it starts just to the left of that dot?
No, to the right. If you zoom in, and the quality of this map might not be as good as the the actual attachment AI, I believe, for the Kachuma Water ITIR, but it's a little bit to.
Okay, I think we might have to agree to disagree that there's green starting anywhere closer to Buellton, but this exhibit does not label anything as high-quality habitat. Is that correct?
It says suitable habitat, which would be suitable for the species which will obviously meet the minimal requirements for breeding and foraging, so.
Okay, but nothing's labeled high-quality habitat, correct?
In this case, correct.
Okay, Ms. Mullen, if we could please go to CDFW fifty-three. And Mr. Sen, I think this won't be a surprise, but this is your testimony, so. And if and when we get there, Ms. Mullen, I'm looking for page ten. Okay. And if we could have basically the bottom of page ten in the top of page eleven visible, that would be great. And Mr. Sen, as we're getting there, you recognize this text that's in italics as a quote from the two thousand and eleven Kachuma reservoir final EIR, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and if we could just scroll down a little bit more, Ms. Mullen, so we can see that just the top of page eleven there, lines two through four. Okay, so that last sentence there, I just want to read it to you, Mr. Sen. It says, there is little likelihood of breeding will of flycatchers at Lake Kachuma or between Lake Kachuma and Buellton, as the habitat does not appear to be capable of supporting them. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and solving's in between Lake Kachuma and Buellton, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Mullen, if we could please go to solving twenty-two, please? All right, and as you see there, Mr. Sen, I'm directing you to what's appendix C of the city's addendum, the PAX terrestrial biological resources report. Do you see that there?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Mullen, if we could go to PDF page eight and have the last paragraph of that page showing? And if we don't mind making it a little bit bigger. Thank you. Excellent. And Mr. Sen, I'll represent to you, and you can probably see as I'm talking that this paragraph, this last paragraph is discussing the flycatcher and the least bells Vireo species. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and I want to read to you the the third sentence. Give you a second to to get there. Starts with the word transient kind of on the the right side of the screen there.
Oh, yes.
Yes. And so that sentence says transient and foraging individuals may utilize the project area. However, given the minimal amount of potential habitat that may exist, it is unlikely. Do you see that?
Uh huh. Yes, I do.
So based on that, you're aware that the the city's environmental documentation does acknowledge that transient individuals of these two species may utilize the project site, correct?
Yes, that's what is stated in the report.
Okay, thank you. Now, looking at the same paragraph, I want to read a few more sentences. The first sentence there, starting with the the names of the species says that those species are not expected to nest on site because the existing riparian vegetation located in the small band along the river and a small remnant in the proposed well site B are not extensive enough to support breeding habitat for these species. Do you see that?
I do.
And that more in the next sentence begins, more extensive riparian habitat, which is more suitable for these species, does occur approximately one point three miles downstream of well site B. You see that as well?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so based on that, you're aware that the city's environmental documentation considered the downstream areas better suited to breeding for these two species.
Can you repeat that?
You're based on what we just read through. You're aware that the city's environmental documentation considered that the downstream areas are better suited to breeding for these two bird species.
Right, yes, I do see that in the report.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mullen, that's all I need from that exhibit. If you don't mind pulling up CDFW fifty-three again, and this time we're going to page thirteen, please.
As you're looking at, am I allowed to respond to any of the questions, or do you want me to?
So far, you've been answering all that I need, Mr. Sen. Thank you.
And Mr. Sen, just so you know, there is an opportunity for redirect from your attorney, so that would be the chance for them to ask you questions about related to these questions.
Oh, thank you for that interpretation.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sen. And let's see, looking at page thirteen, and if we could have paragraph thirty-seven, lines seventeen through nineteen visible, please, Ms. Mullen. Okay, and I just want to say this is in, you recognize this as a quote in your testimony from the final recovery plan of the least bells Vireo?
Yes, a draft ninety-eight recovery plan, yes.
Okay, and I I just want to point you to what starts at line seventeen, that critical habitat for the least bells Vireo exists along the San Diego River from below Jameson Dam west to a point approximately one point six kilometers, one mile, east of the Gibraltar Dam. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, this area is well upstream of the city's project, correct?
That's correct. That's federally designated critical habitat for that species.
And it's upstream of the Kachuma Dam even, correct?
Uh huh, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mullen. We can pull that down. Okay, and just a few more questions here, Mr. Sen. You also cite to surveys that were surveys for the the least bells Vireo that were conducted in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-two, correct?
They did it twenty, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and I believe they conducted surveys this year as well.
Okay, but your testimony only refers from two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-two, correct?
Correct, the the three years, yes.
Yes. Those surveys did not detect any least bells at the project site, correct?
No, they detected yellow-breasted chat, which is an indicator species for least bells, very like I said in my verbal testimony.
But just to clarify, those chat that you showed on the the map were not in well site B, correct?
Not on the actual well site, but right in the right corner, right below the well site.
Right, and and you agree that least bells Vireo were not identified in that area, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, they were the closest sighting of those species were was over two miles away, correct?
Approximately.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. O'Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Sen. With that, I'll turn to Mr. Vivens. Does CCRB have questions for Mr. Sen?
Questions from CCRB. Thank you, Mr. Sen.
Thank you, and the parent district?
No questions from the parent district.
ID number one?
No questions from mighty one.
Thank you. Alasol Guest Ranch?
Yeah, thank you.
And then do any of the other fisheries entities have questions in the form within the scope of Ms. O'Sullivan's cross-exam?
For cow trout, I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Beal, do you have anything?
Um, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, so with that, I will turn to Ms. Germanario. Do you have redirect questions for Mr. Sen?
Yes, I do.
Are you prepared to go ahead with redirect at this time?
Sure, yes.
You may proceed.
Okay, um, thank you. Okay, um, good afternoon, Mr. Sen. Uh, let's see, I will start. So Council for Solving asked you some questions about your testimony about photographs taken between well sites A and B. Is that correct? I can't hear Mr. Sen. Oh, okay. Did you, can you repeat the answer?
Correct. I'm sorry. Can anyone else hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Here you now. Thank you. So I just wanted to ask you if you wanted to provide any clarification about the photographs at this time?
Not so much. I believe I put everything in a testimony. It was CDFW staff of that went down there to take photos. I did not have for the context as far as if it's a reconnaissance mission or an official survey, though I can, you know, surely get those answers if needed, though I know they were taken at that time at the location, so all of that is true.
I believe there were questions from Council for Solving regarding who took the photographs. Do you have knowledge of that?
Yes, I do.
And would you be able to tell us who that was?
Yes, since you asked me a direct question, Kyle Evans, who is now, I see his camera on.
Okay. And it's correct that these photos were taken on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so there were also some questions from Council for Solving about whether CDFW did a protocol level survey at the proposed project site. Is that correct? Okay, and were there, do you want to explain were there other surveys taken of the project site that you looked at in the course of preparing your testimony?
As far as myself, I did not go to to that site, as I told Ms. O'Sullivan.
Okay, but looking.
I would have to confer with my colleagues.
Okay, but looking beyond yourself, survey results, did you refer to the results of surveys that others had conducted at that location for that species, I believe, least bells Vireo, sorry?
Oh, yes, that was in regards to a traditional section six grant with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, NIFLIT.
Oh, Mr. Sen, it looks like you went on mute, or I don't know if you hit mute, or sometimes it seems to be. That's okay.
Part of yeah, those other surveys, that was with those NIFLIT surveys I had mentioned with the Griffiths Wildlife consulting company.
Okay, and if you would, do you want to just provide some brief comments on what those surveys showed in relation to the species?
I'm going to object. My question on cross was much more narrow than that. Was just asking if he had performed surveys in himself or if CDFW has performed surveys in preparation for his testimony, not asking him to explain the the surveys that were, they're already discussed in his in his direct.
I think that's that's fair. So if you can limit the scope, Ms. Germanario.
Sure, thank you. So moving on, Council for Solving also I believe showed you a figure from the Kachuma EIR seat of W sixty-four. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you know, if I remember correctly, the line of questioning was asking you whether the figure was labeled as indicating high-quality habitat, correct?
Correct.
Do you want to, or is there any other information you want to mention that you considered in determining whether this area has high-quality habitat for the species?
Can you repeat that question?
I'm going to object that my question was quite narrow and just referring to what that specific exhibit said, not his general assessment of the habitat near the project.
Well, the question kind of, it opens the door for him to respond. You know, if you're saying the figure doesn't say it's high-quality habitat, he has other information perhaps that informs that.
I'll I'll allow Mr. Sen to respond to this question. Go ahead, Mr. Sen.
Yes, you know, the the Kachuma EIR figure that was shown, those as explained as Sullivan, as she had mentioned, shows a suitable habitat area occupied so for that tenure period, given the downward trend of southwestern will of flycatcher is important to, even though it's a fragment in small habitats, to keep as much habitat as possible for continuous contingent habitat for the species, especially given the decline. So at well site B, it'll, it appears even the tax report had mentioned the habitat quality types, which are characteristics of high-quality burial sofa habitat, which is also my written testimony, that having as much available suitable habitat for these species is critical, given the downward trend, especially in closer proximity to what we have seen as occurrences of these endangered species.
Thank you. And is it correct, just one more question on that point, that your testimony discusses survey, sorry, documentation of riparian habitat directly south of whose well site B to be high-quality for least bells Vireo submitted as part of the ESA section six survey project?
Correct. That's also an exhibit as far as a full report from the NIFLIT section six grant.
Thank you. And moving on to Council for Solving had questions for you about solving twenty-two. If I recall, that is that the addendum? Do you recall those questions?
Is that in regards to the PAX report?
I believe these questions were about habitat for least bells Vireo. Do you recall those questions?
Yeah, I have to look at this exhibit again. Is that the one regards to the?
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Could we actually bring up that exhibit? It's solving twenty-two.
Great. Solving twenty-two, please, Ms. Mullen.
Oh, yes, this is the PAX report.
Thank you. If you would, please go to page eight, if you're not already there. Okay, actually, if you could go a little lower down on the page, I think you were actually on it before. If you could stop there, thank you. So you you did review this addendum and this particular passage in preparing your testimony, correct?
Yes, I read the the whole PAX report.
And you also reviewed Solving's EIR for this project, is that correct, for the original Wells project, correct?
Correct. This is associated with the two thousand and twenty-two addendum.
Okay. And is there anything you'd like to add? Well, let me backtrack, strike that. I believe there were questions regarding this portion of the addendum and its characterization of habitat for least bells Vireo, is that right? Or I'm sorry, southwestern will of flycatcher, is that right?
Southwest, excuse me, southwestern will of flycatcher and least Vireo are mentioned.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to, well, I believe, sorry, hold on a sec.
No, you're good.
Did you? Looking back at this material and, you know, refreshing your memory about the analysis you did, would you want to add anything to your answer before regarding Solving's assessment of habitat for southwestern will of flycatcher in this vicinity?
Yes, and least Vireo, you know, as I said in my written and my verbal testimony, that we find that there's quality habitat for both species right at right below well site B in the riparian area, and the PAX report and their vegetation description talks about the the thickets and if they're going to store there too, I believe. I don't have it right in front of me, but I remember that. So they characterize that as well. And and they had mentioned in the same report, I think it's for, I don't have in front of me this long point, and I think this was discussed yesterday as well, or sorry, a couple of days ago, where the one point three miles downstream from Alasol Bridge, yes, right there identifies suitable sofa habitat, one point three miles downstream of Alasol Bridge, which we agreed with Jules Gibson testimony, that brings it right in the middle of well site B. So they have two and two sentences in this paragraph. On the one, two, three, four, fifth line down, they say more extent for our print habitat is more suitable, one point three miles downstream from well site B. And then says or if I ER identify suitable southwest, like catchable, approximately one point three miles downstream from Alasol Bridge. I know from reading this port, they surveyed only one point five miles downstream of well site or sorry, Alasol Bridge, which only will bring it a tenth, two tenths of a mile past Alasol Bridge. So they did not survey according to this report to one point three miles downstream of well site B. So given the information I sent in report, I don't know how they can make that determination if they never even visited a site according to this report.
Okay, is it your opinion that the other environmental review document for the original Wells project the EIR indicates there is actually quality habitat at a distance from Alasol Bridge? At a distance from uh Alisaw Bridge, which would include the proposed well site.
Yes, uh as stated, there were certified ER identified. So in that document, identify one point three miles downstream Alisaw Bridge, which is consistent with the Kachuma. Yeah, I are uh figures. So yes, it it did state that. And they also, if I remember, conducted only a one day report, a one day survey.
Okay, and then looking to the sentence, um transient and foraging individuals may utilize the project area. However, given the minimal amount of potential habitat that may exist, this is unlikely. Um is there anything from your own review um? That you would uh wanna um respond uh to that?
Oh, yeah, again, uh you know, there are other factors involved. As far as like brown hat calpers, as I mentioned, it's a threat for exposed very ill. Though with those surveys aforementioned, they did again document yellow breast chat. Messing there, so that is a good indicator because they're they like the same habitat, they're gleaners as well. As as various are gleaners are. Uh birds that will take in verbites off the vegetation, whether it's off the bark or a leaf, though the video do. Do capture in verbites in the air as well. So behaviorally, they're very similar and they like the very similar habitat types. For their foraging behavior and both nesting. So for us, we thought that was a again, they're an indicator species that could have good potential for them to miss there. The albeit the other threats.
Okay, um so is it your opinion that um the characterization of habitat in the? Um addendum and the E I R are inconsistent?
With each other, yes.
This is that question goes beyond the scope of my cross examination.
I think that's that's I'll sustain the objection, and I I think I understand where you're going, Ms. German area, so.
Okay, uh moving on. Let's see. Leave uh maybe just one more. Mister Sin, do you remember questions regarding um surveys? Uh for least bells Vero in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two?
Yes, as a range, so twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, yes.
Okay, um. Is there anything you would wanna add um? To kind of supplement the information regarding those surveys in terms of additional information? Um or other surveys conducted?
Miss Kinsey, I just the if Miss um German area could be more specific in her redirect. Uh because I asked that those about those surveys generally does not. Open up for a a general discussion on the issue. My questions were quite narrow on cross.
I think that's fair, Mr. German area, or are you, other than asking whether there's anything you wants to add, is there anything specific um? With respect that questions that you have with respect to the surveys? I would like to keep this focus.
No, actually not at this time. Let me see, I think. I think that um. Oh, I do have one more question, so we're following up on um. Yeah, uh surveys uh to your knowledge um. Have protocol level surveys uh for the species been conducted at the proposed project site?
At the project side was protocol level, sorry, is done in regards to. In 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 general, again, you know, the NIP stories were. Um. Done from basically from the Kachuma reservoir right to the ocean. And so they did not conduct swivel level protocol level surveys as far as going repeatedly. Multiple times in the area, though they did standard protocol level surveys. For when they did their constants for least those very out, but we have strong confidence in the consultant.
Again, objection, my cross question was simply whether Mr. Sin had performed those. Protocol level surveys in preparation for his testimony.
I think that's right, so I'm going to sustain that objection as well.
Okay.
Mario, do you have any more questions?
Uh, nothing further, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I did remember that I had a question, which we'll we'll see if Mr. Sen, I'm wondering if um. Within your area of expertise as a biologist, whether you have experience and knowledge uh and expertise with respect to. The water needs of the riparian vegetation, so not 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 the animals, but the plants.
Yes, uh yeah, I'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions, Miss Kinsey, on that.
So what I'm wondering is, in your opinion, um. You had expressed, I think you cited to a document and support, but also expressed the opinion that. Um the riparian vegetation. On which I think it was least bells very depends or uses habitat. Uh thrives in conditions in which there's less than when groundwater levels are within three meters of the surfaces, did I? Thank you, okay. Do you know whether um in the statement of less than three meters groundwater levels or or? Subsurface water levels are less than three meters from the surface? Um, do you know how that accounts for what I think is normal seasonal variation in water levels? I think on most, as far as I know, on most river systems. Um is it your understanding that sometimes levels would drop below three meters and sometimes be above, or what is your understanding of how that would work? Uh it support this thriving riparian habit plants that we're talking about?
We're talking the ideal situation and the recovery plan also talks about, you know, when I stated before the threats and stressors that would draw down that water. Uh for you know, for the various human consumptions and activities that would divert that water. And so as regards to the riparian vegetation community that. That stated as far as the thick understory, you know, you got various plant communities in our apparent ecosystem where there is herbaceous communities. Shrub communities and those larger trees, so that three meters is addressing your. Most maximal root depth species, which are, you know, your cottonwoods and. Willow trees, you know, which get up to that level, though we've been documented, I might get, you know, eight, nine feet or seven feet. As a max root depth, and given that, you know, it needs to be lessened that to cover the root depth. To water for your shrubs and herbaceous species, which are. Important for these species as well for both nesting and foraging. Because it's not safe as that and it maintains at a level only to sustain the tall static trees, you're gonna slowly see. A die off of your basis communities, then your shrubs and get a kind of a quote-unquote desert desertification. Of that landscape and as a result, what we found that a lot of times. When those communities are gone, it fills in with like invasive plants. Bunch grasses, which would be more susceptible to fire as flying fuel loads. Which has a synergistic effect with drought, and so if a fire comes through, that buffer of wetness that is in the repairing zone. Buffer by i- i- if you will, a green. Uh fire break as fire term terminology, that will be gone, so. Uh having that buffer to make sure that all plant communities thrive.
I think, let me, let me have you pause, please, Mr. Sir, if I can interrupt you, I think my question, what I was trying to focus on here was. How resistant um these typical shrubs and trees are to periods in which the groundwater levels or the subsurface water levels are lower? Than the root zone, um I mean, I would imagine they can maybe go. It there's a difference between going a day and going a year, and I was wondering if you could comment on um the the. If you know, if you have knowledge of um.
Yes, we experience. Yeah, we see dieback of the larger trees after several years of extreme drought, for example, when that happens. Though again, you know, those other plant communities that have shorter roots will go first. And as far as length of time, I believe even the. Final E I R addendum recognizes that after several years of that water, that plants will start to die. So I I'm in agreement with that.
Would you expect in if there were six months in which the the subsurface water table was lowered, would you expect to see die off of the shrubs and trees?
Um.
Can you make an or can you say anything knowledgeable? I you know, I mean, maybe that you can't make an assessment, it depends, that's a fine answer.
Yeah, I hate to say that, that's a standard biological. You know, you have to give it in context. And the context to a what time of year, a lot of your herbaceous uh perennials. Mugwort, for example, that is the predominant beer in San Sanus River, you know, they have a flowering period, I think. Uh March through August, and so having that diversity of those plants, it's important because those. Her basic communities will bring in pollinators that the like bees, for example, that flycatchers will eat. And the state of California were making a big push for pollinators as well as important ecosystem level processes. Um. Species uh that are key for that as they pollinate other plants as well. So it depends, uh you know, if six months will be done, what time of year it is. What plants will be affected? If it's done in a period will affect and kill off those flowering plants, that's just not gonna be. Not a good scenario, as will reduce the foraging potential for some of these species.
Thank you, that's very helpful, Mr. Sen.
You're welcome.
With that, I will turn to you, Ms. O'Sullivan, based on um the redirect and my questions. Do you have additional questions for um Mr. Sen?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. I think I just have one or two um. Mister Sen, you made a comment that you weren't sure how the PACS team, you know, made determinations about. Habitat one point three miles downstream of well site B or even a well site B. Uh without visiting the site, do you remember making that comment?
Yes.
Okay, um and we established earlier that you did not visit. The site, the project site or downstream areas, correct?
Right.
And yet you made conclusions about habitat and species without visiting the site, correct?
Correct, can I address that further?
Uh nope, that's all I need, thank you. No further questions, Ms. Kinsey.
Thank you, Ms. O'Sullivan. I believe I checked all my boxes. So with that, uh thank you so much, Mr. Sen, for joining us today. I really appreciate your testimony and appreciate you being here and spending time here. Um, thank you very much, and you are excused for the day. I think with that, we have, just to summarize where we are, my understanding of where we are, um we have heard the case in chief. Um from Cal Trout, we have heard the case in chief summary of written testimony from nymphs. We still have outstanding from CDA CDFW, uh Mr. Demuhha, which we are gonna meet next week and talk about the timing of. His testimony. Um. We have not yet uh offered or accepted any of the exhibits into the record, we're gonna deal with that um later when we meet again, probably in. Probably near the end in December. What I did wanna talk about today is our schedule going forward, we're gonna meet next week, but on the limited question of when to hear from Mr. Demuhha. I did wanna talk about the possibility of bringing in solving's rebuttal witnesses um. On November twenty-ninth, which we had kept reserved, and it's my understanding that. Although the parent district may not be able to attend, that they had no objection to us hearing from solving's witnesses on. The twenty-ninth, um that may put us in, if we haven't heard from Dr. Uh Mr. Demuhha, may put us in the position of. Hearing rebuttal testimony before we heard, we hear the the testimony to that is being rebutted. Um and we all have the written testimony, but here the summary and the cross examination. So there is that, it's slightly awkward, but I I think it can be overcome, but I wanted to hear from all of you, so I look to you. Uh, Mr. Kim, do you have any comments or thoughts about um bringing in solving's rebuttal witnesses on November twenty-ninth?
I'll have to defer to uh Ms. O'Sullivan because she's been handling the the scheduling, but just a a a couple of comments. Uh just upon uh what you just laid out and and thank you for um accurately laying out uh. You know, where we've been and where we're gonna go, and so uh it's understanding by close business today, we are gonna get uh some uh red line of. Uh Mr. Do uh Demuhha's uh testimony and uh next Wednesday. Uh is limited to discussion of uh not only when Mr. Demuhha will. Uh give his testimony, but also logistics and timing of uh you know, sir rebuttal. Uh you know, to that um uh revised testimony, so um and then. Uh just uh housekeeping, two housekeeping housekeeping matters um while we're at it, um if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
So so number one, um. You know, prior to uh the start of uh this week, uh we had the contingency of a a government, you know, US government shutdown. And unfortunately, we have, as I understand it, you know, another deadline coming up uh November seventeenth. And and so I just wanted to, you know, just plant the seed that um if there is not a bill to extend that deadline. That uh we should all be um prepared to discuss, you know, the ramifications. Of a shutdown, if it happens on November seventeenth and how it impacts the schedule, so I ju- I just wanted to. You know, flag that, put that in everyone's consciousness, because I I think it would be productive to talk about that on the fifteenth. And then the uh second housekeeping matter is, um I I believe you said that uh uh there would be transcripts. Uh available, uh you know, uh some zoom function, as I understand it, that uh.
Yes.
You know, does a written transcription, and so just wanna get a a sense as to uh. Uh when that would be available as well as how we would access them.
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Anderson, I believe those are available almost immediately with our recordings and are uploaded onto the AHO FTP site. Maybe now, but maybe um Mr. Anderson, can you speak to the status of the Zoom transcripts for um the hearing this week?
Yes, the Zoom transcripts from the sixth and the eighth have been uploaded. The transcript from today should be complete sometime later this afternoon. And I can um make sure that I move that over uh later this afternoon.
That would be great, Mr. Anderson, then it'll be available. I, some of us do not have a workday tomorrow, but some of us may have a workday tomorrow, unfortunately.
Great, tha- thank you, Mr. Anderson, yeah, I I had not uh accessed them and had not uh. An idea as to how immediately available they were, so that 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 is fantastic, and so. I think uh Mrs. Sullivan was ready to address uh availability of city rebuttal witnesses on November twenty-ninth and thirty.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kinsey. Uh certainly, the city has, you know. Advised its rebuttal witnesses, Mr. Nicely and Mr. Vanderlinen to keep those days available. So they are, you know, available for that day, my con- those days, my concern is that Mr. Uh Nicely's rebuttal testimony is directly responsive to Mr. Demucha's testimony, and so to the extent that Mr. Demucha is going to be. Changing his calculations and conclusions. I am concerned that having Mr. Nicely go before Mr. Demucha would essentially. Make Mr. Nicely's rebuttal testimony not useful to the AHOs to to your office.
Right.
And not give the city a chance to actually respond to the revised uh Mr. Demucha's testimony, so I guess I know we're. We're talking about how to handle that next week, but that's the the asterisk I would put on our availability for that those days.
That, no, that makes sense. I think we have to deal with that problem and Mr. Demuhha, unfortunately, I don't think we can hear from him. Um on that day, and it may make sense that for for Mr. Nicely, what we had talked about just uh in concept, and we will talk about it again next week. I'm not gonna make any final decisions here, but in concept, the possibility of Mr. Nicely presenting rebuttal and so rebuttal possibly together. Um, however, we think that's appropriate in response, so it it probably makes sense to say that I think what we should do, though, is at least. Um, have Mr., my understanding is Mr. Vanderlanden is is your other rebuttal witness, is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Kinsey, that's correct.
I think we should at least plan to meet on November twenty-ninth and hear from Mr. Vanderlanden. Um, and get that. Is, I mean, it may be a short, very short day, but that's what I'm tentatively putting out there so that we can get through that and hopefully get through the other witnesses. On December fourth, this is absent government shutdown, um December fourth, and. Uh I don't have it off the top of my head, is it the ninth?
Uh, fourth and thirteenth are the certain days, and then I believe we have the sixth and the seventh.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid the fourth and the thirteenth, we have those. Um, with that tentative proposal out there, I will look to you, Mr. Bivens. Do you look like you may have something to add?
Well, I I don't know at this point whether I'm going to cross examine. What is it, Mr. Vanderlinen is being proposed for the twenty?
Yes.
Um, I haven't made that decision yet, um I will probably make it fairly quickly. Um, but I'm not prepared to do that at this hearing and and we're like on the fly right now.
Right.
I am also uh planning to be at Aqua.
Wow.
I would, you know, look, if you tell me this is when it's happening, and if you're gonna do it, do it, then, you know, I'll be prepared, but if we can. I would, you know, look, if you tell me this is when it's happening, and if you're going to do it, do it, then, you know, I'll be prepared. But if we can avoid doing it from the. Hotel room in Palm Springs, that would be.
Preferable.
I I would also add if if Mr. Bivins decides he's going to cross. That witness, I'd want to be there too, but I could also do it from a hotel. We have to do so.
So like a modest proposal, which is, you know, I I we're going to meet next week on on Wednesday, and I will know by. I can make myself know by Wednesday whether I'm going to cross Mr. Vanderlanden in any capacity. And could make that representation at the at our prehearing conference.
Okay, so there's one. Thank you, Mr. Bivins. One propose, I wanted to look to you, Ms. Hall. I think you had indicated you were unavailable to join us. On. Next week, whenever that is, November 15th, I think it is.
That's correct. I'm unavailable all of next week.
Would you be comfortable if we I what I would like to do is have this conversation as one unit, because there's some contingent factors. In terms of scheduling Mr. De Muhha's testimony. And then also scheduling Mr. Vanderlanden and Mr. Nicely accordingly. Do you have any objection to to us dealing with those in terms of just the timing of that? Hearing from them and whether or not we're going to hold hearing days on November 29th and 30th when we meet next week?
My only objection would be to introducing new dates that I don't currently have reserved. I'm fine with all of the existing dates.
Okay, that that seems like a fair caveat. So does that make sense to you, Mr. Bivins, that we can return to this question? Well, and then I'll look to the rest of the room. Return to the question of the ordering of. Witnesses when we meet next week and we may have. By we, I mean, not not me, you may have more information. That makes sense. And then Ms. O'Sullivan, does that make sense from the city's perspective as well?
Yes, I I think that does, Ms. Kinsey, especially since I think some of this, how we deal with it is going to be dependent on how extensive the changes are in the red line of Mr. De Muhha's testimony. So once we have a handle on that and we meet next week, I think, well, we should be in a good position to know what to do.
That makes sense. And then I'll look, I'm going to go all the way around the room, but do just the parent district ID number one or also guest ranch have any additional comments?
For the parent district, my my notes are either incomplete or disorderly. Could you remind me what time on the 15th we were talking about a prehearing conference?
As I recall, 3:00 PM.
Okay.
For a conference on the 15th.
That I will be able to do.
Ms. Kinsey, should we expect a? An order?
You would, you should expect some. Yes, you should expect something, but probably not until Monday. So it's coming.
Thank you.
Yeah. And. My fisheries entities. Well, Ms. Hall, it sounds like, do you have any other comments on the what we've talked about so far?
Just one clarification. We mentioned the potential of Mr. Vanderlanden rebuttal beginning on the 29th. Would you envision getting to any of the fisheries rebuttal witnesses on that date?
No, we would not hear from the and it sounds like we're going to try to postpone Mr. Vanderlanden too as well. But no, my committal, my commitment from before was that we would not get to the the fisheries. Entities witnesses on the 29th or 30th, we would pick up on December 4th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I will look to either. Ms. Beal or Ms. Germanario, do you have any other comments about? What we've talked about in our meeting in advance of our meeting next week?
No.
I'm sorry, I called on both of you at this. I should stop waiting that. Ms. Beal, you can go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say my only comment is, as with what happened last time, we we will make efforts to put. Rick Bush and myself and hopefully the rest of our team on the accepted list, but it's a little difficult to know in advance.
Noted. Yes. And Ms. Germanario?
Mostly that works for us, just to clarify the request to submit the. Request for judicial notice regarding the federal ESA status that would be due one week from today, close of business or at what time?
Let's just, I'm converting to this end of the day standard of 11:59 PM. Just in the electronic age, it seems to make sense. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to meet next week on the 15th at 3 o'clock. Is there anything else we should talk about before we close our hearing day today? All right. Well, I wanted to thank all of you again for. Being here and participating and cooperating in us moving forward. I appreciated three good hearing days, and I will see you next week. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey.